Welcome to the June 25 meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council. Ms. Gels Harris has our prayer and our pledge.
Thank you, Mayor. May we bow our heads for a moment of quietness. And by quietness, I mean just don't think about anything. Just breathe. Just clear your mind. And, Lord, we thank you for allowing us to have this moment of quietness. A lot of times when we take a moment of silence, Lord, we let so much clutter our minds. But when we go into quietness, that's when you come into our hearts and our spirit. And we ask that you come into our spirits and our hearts tonight, Lord. And, Lord, we thank you for just being here. It's only through your grace and your mercy that we are here, Lord. From the moment of conception, Lord, that very moment, our moments turned into seconds, our seconds into minutes, our minutes into hours, our hours into days, our days into weeks, our weeks into months, and then our months into years. And before we know it, Lord, we are at this place. And we thank you for that. But we ask ourselves, Lord, through this short amount of time, what have we done for you? What have we done for you, Lord? And you said, "We serve mankind." We serve you by serving mankind. And, Lord, allow us to step up to serve your people. And, Lord, we thank you for the men on our city council, the elected officials. We thank you for our city manager and our co-city manager, that they are all, not just men, Lord, they just witnessed another Father's Day. So they are not just men, Lord, they are fathers. And that's what our world needs to see. That's what our city needs to see, men that step up and be fathers. And we thank you for them. We thank you for our mayor, our young mayor. Give him the wisdom and protect him as he makes tough decisions without the presence sometimes of the council as he handles day-to-day deeds, Lord. We pray for the Shoffner family, Lord, in a special way. And, Lord, our world is in a mess, just in cities after cities, just a mess, Lord. And we ask ourselves, why? Why all this? And, Lord, we really know the reason why. We're in the shape that we're in because we have taken you out and all of the worldly things have come in, Lord. Lord, I remember in these 62 years that I've been on this earth that you've blessed me. I remember growing up in school, we started every day with prayer. I remember going to Sunday School to meetings, every meeting with prayer. That's a big component, Lord, that we're leaving out of our day-to-day lives. And, Lord, as we get ready to make a big decision on our council in bringing in a new attorney, we just thank you for Susan McGannon. We thank you for the years of service she has rendered. We thank you for blessing her to have the knowledge that she has and the experience that has kept our city very legally sound, very legally sound. A lot of cities can't brag about that, Lord, but that's a brag we can brag about. And as she enters her retirement, Lord, we ask for good health. We ask that she begins to see the labor, the fruits of her labor, Lord, that she has given to this city. And, Lord, we just cannot thank you enough for the things you do for us on a day-to-day basis. We just can't thank you enough. We don't deserve it, Lord. We just don't deserve it. But just by your grace and your mercy, you continuously pour blessings and blessings upon our lives, and we thank you for that. And as we get ready to handle the business of the city, Lord, we ask that you move in the midst of us that we will make the decisions that are pleasing in your sight. This is our prayer. We ask in your darling son's name. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We don't have any ceremonial items tonight, so we'll move into the consent agenda. You have five different sections with several items up underneath it.
Move for passage.
Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Wright will call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. You have the minutes of the May 26, 2015 special meeting in front of you.
No changes. I move for passage.
Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Wright will call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll move into second readings and consider for passage on second reading ordinance 15OZ33 to rezone an area at 1508 and 1512 East Main Street to Commercial Fringe CF District.
Move for passage.
Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Wright will call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll consider for passage on second reading ordinance 15OZ34 to rezone an area at 417, 419, and 427 East Burton Street to General Office Residential OGR District.
Move for second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye. Consider for passage on second reading ordinance 15O42 admitting the Murfreesboro City Code, Chapter 32 Traffic, Section 321014 regulating the height of motorcycle handlebars.
Move for passage. Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll move to new business and consider recommendations of the city engineer with regards to bids for relocation of Lidle Street and Northwest Broad Street Intersection.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland, and members of the city council. The relocation of the Lidle Street Northwest Broad Intersection will provide greater separation from the new Broad Memorial Project and provide adequate stacking for turning vehicles. The relocation of Lidle Street will also provide the opportunity to correct an existing geometric problem at the intersection of Lidle and College Streets with the use of a roundabout. While this phase of the project does not include landscaping or hardscape, the potential does exist to add either or both with additional phases. The project has was presented to both the Main Street Board of Directors and the Downtown Business Owners Association. There's apparent support for the new entrance into the Central Business District. Three bids were received on June 11th with a low bid in the amount of $2,192,805.10 being submitted by Sessions Paving of Nashville. We've included a copy of the tabulated bids for your review as well as a letter from our consultant, Wiser Consultants, recommending the project be awarded to Sessions. With that, excuse me, I'm sorry. The most recent estimate completed by Wiser Consultants was for almost $2.3 million. And Stafford recommends the construction be funded initially by the city's general fund with reimbursement to be provided from a future bond sale. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I'll only make a comment, and we'll sure be happy when this project's completed. And I guess the sooner we approve it, the sooner it'll be completed. So I move that we accept the recommendations of the city engineer.
Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
And is this considered now or at the next, just placed on your desk regarding the refunding resolution?
It's not on the agenda. You'll have to go under to other business.
We'll do it.
I'm just kidding, Mr. Griffith. Yes, you have the funding resolution for this expenditure.
It's actually a, it's increasing two previous refunding resolutions by $700,000 to include the construction phase of the project as well.
This is Resolution 15R29, correct?
Move for passage.
Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Wright will call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
That was a good one, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. We'll now consider recommendations of the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of city council. Your staff has been hard at work with the new enterprise resource planning software, particularly want to single out Ms. Tucker and Matt Jared in IT while there's been a large supporting cast, including Chris Lilly and Althea Pemsel. But Erin and Matt have worked many long hours getting ready for our July 1 cut over for the software program. As you know, we've also centralized our purchasing functions, and Ms. Althea Pemsel's been doing an outstanding job taking us from a paper-driven process to one that's going to be streamlined in the new software. So we've got some ordinances and resolutions on the agenda for you this evening, but I think Ms. Pemsel's got a brief PowerPoint, not to be outdone by Mr. Gore, but I think it might be helpful so she can give you kind of a broad, broad brush explanation of our, some of our major goals here, and then I'll be glad to talk about the changes in the ordinance resolution and employee handbook.
So, good evening, Mayor, council, city manager, and officers. My name is Althea Pemsel, for the record. I'm the purchasing director. I've been here for approximately six months, relatively new. What we've done is we took what we had in place in terms of all of the departments, and I met with each of them to determine their needs, how they operate now, what they'd like to see happen. And so we took all of that information to help us conform, not only to the ERP system, but to the needs of the actual city itself. So why an ERP system? Generally, ERP means Enterprise Resource Planning System. And the goal is to centralize the financial and procurement functions where you can do input, you could track reporting, and also to be able to have real-time data all the time. The owner is actually finance, meaning they're the overseers of the system, and it will be able to track our budgets, our fixed assets, purchasing, human resources, and payroll. It will be on a server, and IT will manage the security of that system. These are some words that we're often throwing about these days, so it's been a learning curve for everyone, and an exciting one nonetheless. ERP stands for Enterprise Resource Planning. P2P is what we're going to be doing, that's procure to pay. It's a systematic way to request, to obtain purchase orders, and to pay invoices. Our business process improvement, the goal was to consolidate and to streamline the procurement process as well as the invoice processing process. Electronic data interchange, that's going to be future initiatives for us. That's where we can actually order things online. You're all familiar with Amazon, so it's a method of being able to order online and to be able to pay using a purchase order. In a centralized process, is there really four components? Those components are people, process, technology, and service. The people are our suppliers, their internal staff, and other professionals that we use. Engineers, landscapers, and architects are also included in that. The process is how we use RFPs, ITBs, competitive seal proposals, to be able to still issue solicitations, get those prices and proposals back, evaluate them, and then make an award decision. Of course, based on the dollar amount, if it's something within a city manager's authority and approved by legal, then he would sign that contract, and if not, it will come to the council as usual. The technology piece consists of Tyler. We're going to be using Adobe and other EchoSign and other types of software to be able to move our documents around. The ERP system itself has a document holder called Tyler Content Manager that will hold all of our requisitions and all of our purchase orders. The services that we receive comes from our external vendors and sometimes even our internal customers. For example, I know that the solid waste handles most of the fuel, and they charge the internal departments for that. The procurement cycle is basically requisitions, approval, a purchase order being issued, a receiving report, an invoice comes in. If it matches, we pay it. The biggest advantage we have now is that all the requests are going into one funnel to be processed, and they're electronically moving about through the system. So the approval process is there as well as the receiving process. That's where they acknowledge the goods and receipts of the goods and the invoicing process. We still will use the types of solicitations we already have in place, the process of formal and informal, that remains the same. Purchasing processes are really essential to an organization. We're able to harness the market forces by having pre-negotiated agreements and to be able to, year-to-year, have some consistency in budgeting processes because of contracts. It improves our fiscal management. It also helps us to stretch our budgets. The process begins with the requisition after the departments determine their needs, and after they obtain quotes, they put those into system itself. So they enter their requisition. It is then reviewed by the purchasing department and converted to a purchase order after all the information is verified, whether it has received the appropriate approvals by council, the approvals by their department managers or department heads, and IT and other departments as necessary. After the goods are received, then they are reviewed by the department receiving them to ensure that they're in compliance with the purchase order. Any damages or shortages should be reported immediately to the supplier. After that, they put in the ERP system that they've received the goods and that they're in good order and that we're ready to pay any invoices that will be incoming. Some other initiatives we have is to do some online catalogs for consumables. Those are things that we use all the time, and that's called indirect spend for janitorial supplies, office supplies, et cetera. Contracts for consolidated purchases where we do citywide agreements so that we can harness the economies of scales from all the different departments, and our supplier form that's held next Monday at the Chamber of Commerce.
Thea, how many slides were there in your presentation?
Ten.
I could read all of them, but one. And that's 95% better than most presentations we see. So congratulations on an excellent presentation.
Thank you. Thank you.
The team really has worked hard to streamline and make our process more efficient. Right now, you know, I have nightmares about boxes showing up with stacks of bills that I have to sign. I can tell you that the critters at Barfield Crescent eat crickets, and the crickets are $1.25 each. That's the kind of work that gets involved in having to prove all the things that come in. I get boxes three and four times a day, bills to look at, sign, and it really is not as efficient as it could be. And Ms. Pemsel and the rest of the team have really worked hard to make sure that we've got the appropriate controls, the appropriate reviews, that we're managing the public's money absolutely with the greatest care, but to be efficient at the same time. So a lot of work, and that's what we've got before you today. And over the years, you know, going back to the charter and the ordinances approved by council in the past, that they've pointed those functions to the city manager and the finance director. But now that we've got a centralized purchasing function, what Ms. McGannon has brought to you is kind of cleaning up all of those things so that we can assign some of those responsibilities in different places so that it makes the most sense, again, with the same, you know, kind of assurance that it's accountable, it's responsible, and we're being good with the public's money. So kind of four big changes in the documents that are before you tonight. The first being that there's, in the various places where it talks about, you know, city manager approval, we're substituting it where appropriate for the purchasing director. The second change deals with when written quotes are required. We'd like to move that up from $7,500 to $10,000. Now, I want to assure you that just because that dollar amount is increased, it doesn't mean that we're going to just rely on phone quotes. Our team wants to get the best deal. They manage their budgets well, and, you know, there is no incentive for them to spend more than they need to. They will always want to drive toward the best price, but we do want to move that dollar amount up from $7,500 to $10,000. And as we've talked about with the financial software program, as Ms. Pemsel pointed out, the purchasing functions and the finance software are now tied together right there. So when a department goes to enter that requisition, the system is going to look at the department budget and that line item to make sure that there's sufficient money in there. It's also set, and we've got some adjustment on here for right now until we get some more experience with it, a bell will be rung to the department head if they're at 75% spend on that line item. We want to make sure that you know you're getting a little bit close, and they'll be able to know from experience whether 75% in September is absolutely normal, or 75% in June is absolutely normal. They'll know, but at least there's that alert, heads up, so that we can have control and know that we can bring things where they need to be budget-wise. And then another change is dealing with really the bills to be paid. And, Mr. Smotherman, we didn't mean to step on your toes on the bills to be paid here, but one of the things that we have found in looking at all this is that oftentimes for big purchases, the city council approves the budget. So you've seen those items for a first time. Many times, contracts come to you, like what Mr. Griffith talked to you this evening about the Lidle Street improvements. So the council's going to approve the contract, and then when the bill needs to be paid, then we put it on the bills to be paid for the council to approve a third time. What we're suggesting to you is, in those situations when the councils approve the budget and the council approves a contract, that you've said yes to that expenditure and that we would not put that on the bills to be paid. Now, the advantage here is if council doesn't meet a particular week, we may have a contractor or vendor saying, you know, "I really want to get paid." Even though we know the council's approved the contract, it puts the vendor at a disadvantage, and we want to pay our bills and pay them on time. So in situations where, you know, we need to get council approval, we absolutely will. But when you've already approved it two times, that third step seems to be unnecessary and maybe, you know, causes the contractor to be paid a little bit later. But I really do want to emphasize the power of the new software to help us really know right there on the spot what we've got. Our departments have had to use spreadsheets and other means and working with finance to manage that, but, and they've done a good job. But now what the software does is they can answer those questions from their desktop right then and there and not have to keep a separate set of books or call Erin and Melissa and ask, "Hey, can you make sure that this line item is okay?" So that's just kind of a quick overview. I want to double-check with our city attorney to make sure I have not missed anything in the ordinance, the resolution, or the employee handbook changes that, you know, take what we've shared with you today and put it on the books.
I think this is a great thing, and, Mr. Lyons, it'll take a lot of work off of you. Just a legal question, Ms. McGannon. Since it's in our city charter that the city manager must approve all of this, do we have to change the charter, or did you change the charter before we vote?
I don't believe you have to change the charter because the charter specifies in several relevant locations, except as may otherwise be directed by the city council by ordinance. So I think this ordinance allows you to focus it elsewhere. When there are charter amendments, it might be good to remove any doubt by cleaning up some of it because there are several places where it's referenced. I believe this is legally sufficient, that you, by ordinance, have the power to give direction, and if you adopt the ordinance as proposed, you are saying, not regarding what the charter says, this is what we, the city council, are willing to do at this time and place.
Thank you.
And while there's, you know, the information in the ordinances and the resolutions that serve as our guidepost, I can assure you that, you know, department heads still call to say, "I know this was in the budget. Do we want to still proceed with this?" Ms. Pemsel and I meet daily, and if there's an issue or a question about a purchase, about whether we want to move it, move forward, yet maybe it was improved in the budget, but have their conditions changed, we're going to be talking and using teamwork and communication to make sure that we're still on mission and on target. So we don't have blinders on about this. We'll still use some common sense and teamwork to make sure that we're meeting the needs and goals of the city council.
And if I could supplement my response to Mr. Lyons' inquiry, was there anything else? I would call the council member's attention to the language in the resolution. As said in the cover letter, it covers many things that you have already done, but it does do some things a little bit differently. I'm sure everybody's read it and noticed that, you know, we're specifically authorizing the delegation and designation and sharing of authority in some instances from Ms. Wright to Ms. Tucker and for Doug Swan and Water and Sewer. And so we're empowering them to perform functions that would otherwise be held by the city recorder or the city manager. And we're also putting in one place, because we have the ERP software, if you look at the second page, the section that's talking about other payments, it's trying to identify the various kinds of bills that the city pays routinely that historically we have not brought to the city council, but we hadn't fully made clear that that was good with you. And we're making clear, there was a change that was impacting in item number four, payments from the self-insurance fund. Previously, you'd said $1,000 on that. Because of the change to $10,000, we're making in some other areas, we said $10,000. And because the software can't distinguish between final payments coming out of, final settlements coming out of the risk management fund, we deleted that limitation. So now it's any amount over $10,000 coming from the risk management fund, whether it's a final settlement or not. And, you know, so, so the language in the resolution is further fleshing out the principles that Mr. Lyons described, but because it is a little bit different from the resolutions you've seen on this topic previously, wanted to make sure if you had any questions about that delegation, that you could address it.
This seems like a lot is going on here, and it sounded like there was a lot of, a lot of summary that wasn't in the summary.
that wasn't in the summary. So like part of this that I read, that now, I guess since you've said it that way, I read in here last night, the city manager, city recorder have personal liability for some of these decisions. Now, does that extend to the new people who have new authority?
There is nothing in here specifically assigning personal liability to them, no. Certainly, they would be held accountable for performance of their job duties, which would include exercising these responsibly and honestly. The fact that the language in the charter, I think, is somewhat ambiguous, where saying that there's personal liability if something is approved corruptly. Well, what does that mean? That's an uncommon term. So it was problematic language, but the point is, the council has the authority under the charter to say, somebody other than the city manager can be the purchasing agent. And the ordinance and the resolution are saying, yes, the council wants somebody other than the city manager to be the purchasing agent, and these other decisions flow from that. The ability to have authority shared reflects the fact that even though we have electronic communication of all kinds these days with wireless instruments, people are on vacation, they're at conferences, and you don't want to hold things up. So that's why you would allow responsibility to be shared between Ms. Wright and Ms. Tucker for certain approvals, as opposed to when the city was, you know, a tenth of this size probably is when the charter was done. It's trying to modernize the multiple responsibilities while still having safeguards in place. One of the things that is clear from the system and was part of the resolution is that all of these officials have the ability to see everything, even though they may not be the person who's got, you know, they don't have sole authority to sign, they have unlimited ability to check up on and inspect and do spot checks to make sure it's working as intended. So there was a lot of detail. Until the system was fully developed and we could think of all the process, it wasn't possible to piecemeal it until we thought we had the parts fitting together.
I guess I'm curious for Rob, why wouldn't we sort of move, shift that to city, assistant city managers? Why wouldn't they take some of that load instead of calling out? Or is that, is it purchasing director, or is it purchasing director and others?
Well, when...
Where this is getting, the authority is getting shifted to? I'm just curious. I don't know.
When I'm on vacation, I'll appoint an acting city manager while I'm out, and the acting city manager's got the full authority to approve these payments. And Ms. McGannon made a good point. When I get those boxes of bills to look at, I do look at them, and I spot check some. I start looking at it, what's on there, does it look right? I'll have the same ability electronically, and that's what's, I think, very good about the system, is all the documents are going to be there. So I'll be able to click onto the purchase order or the requisition and see all the same kind of background that I get. So I intend to continue to spot check things just to make sure it looks right. We're doing a good job.
Do we currently have the ability to do online purchasing, or is this something new that we're adding the ability to pay bills through our online purchasing?
We have the ability to do online purchasing, like with OfficeMax and Amazon now. But there are other companies like Printer Services, where we do business cards, routine office supplies, like Letterhead and stuff like that, we would also include in that.
And I'm assuming that would be much more efficient and save money and save tax dollars?
We would save a lot of money.
We don't currently do online payment. If you're, we do purchase.
Okay, so we will be able to do online payment, and that's the improvement of what we're getting here?
Maybe in the future. That's not, other than where we pay, like the IRS, where they do wire transfers or ACHs out of our bank account, Blue Cross Blue Shield, but we don't currently have credit cards or purchasing cards. That's the wave of the future. Not yet. I'm sure we will get there with Ms. Pemsle leading us, but we're not there just yet.
Yeah, and while we've talked about the purchasing from the city side, and that's absolutely critical, the fact of the matter is, is we've got a lot of partners in purchasing, and they're the vendors that we buy things from. I really want to credit Ms. Pemsle. She's got a supplier form Monday morning, 8:30 at the Chamber of Commerce, where we're inviting the people that we do business with to come learn more about this system because we're trying to help them understand the changes that are coming. And her focus on the customer here, both the internal customer being city employees and our external customer, our vendors, is to be commended. She wants to make sure they understand how this is going to work so that it's a smooth transition for them as well.
I have two more questions you might be able to explain pretty quickly that I had underlined. One was just sort of to explain section nine, and the other one was to tell me, what's the 40% number in here? Let's see if I can find it. I just erased my stuff, sorry.
Mr. Lance, the 40%, I am fairly certain was referencing the fact that the state, the General Assembly said, if you have centralized purchasing, you can do a couple of things. One of them was to increase the amount above which publicly advertised invitations to bid were required. We had already, through a separate law, had that at the new limit at $25,000. But what they did was say, you can get your requirement for written quotes at 40% of whatever your maximum is. So 40% of the $25,000 is what we now would be able to do to raise the $7,500 to $10,000.
All right. Couldn't do the math. Got it. I wasn't including the $25,000, sorry. So the section nine, what is...
Section nine of which?
Of the... Whatever this...
Of the ordinance?
I think so, yes.
The competitive sealed proposals?
15043.
Okay.
So this is, you know, basically saying, what does that mean? Use of competitive sealed proposal procurement must be recommended by the purchasing director and approved by the city council?
The state law that allows us to use competitive sealed proposals says that the governing body has to approve the use of competitive sealed proposals. What we've done thus far is come to you with something from the department head saying, "I want to use the CSP method of advertising." You know, Water and Sewer did that when they said, "We want to use a CSP to get consultant and to get software." We've had to come to you. It's generally been on the consent agenda, you know, and it says the rationale for why this isn't just a widget. Why an invitation to bid and low price won't work, we need to consider things such as experience, ability to relate to our other software, that sort of stuff. If we're going to go away from a strict publicly advertised low bid for something over $25,000, we have to justify that to you before we put it out on the street. And what this is doing is saying that all of those requests will go through the purchasing director to you, so we'll have some consistency, whereas what we've been doing thus far had been pretty ad hoc. It might come from admin, you know, but most often it came from the department head. So it's just making clear in our procurement code policy how that process for competitive sealed proposals will work.
Is there any issue? I guess there's going to be a question for Rob. Is there any issue that a department head would desire to have this done? Purchasing director might say, "Well, no, I don't think it's the right thing to do," but the department head would want to do it, and now it's not going to happen where it would have happened before? And, I mean, is there, I don't...
I don't expect any issues with that. Honestly, I think what will be helpful is Ms. Pemsle will have an opportunity to see all of these from different directions to make sure that we're approaching these in a consistent fashion. Department head may think this may be a good tool, but Ms. Pemsle and the legal department may say, "There's a reason why we can't do it that way." So having her, we want our purchasing things to flow through her. She's got many years of looking at what are best practices and innovative ways to improve our warranties and get better pricing, so I don't expect a problem. If there's an issue, I'll certainly intervene.
Thank you. This whole change sounds good, and this may be too much of a general question, but what's the worst thing that can happen? I mean, I say it was too much of a general question. That's okay. We'll let you, when you come back to us after your retirement, we'll, you can answer.
Who's the question to me? Oh, I thought it was a question to you.
No, I withdraw that question. Yeah, I'm good.
I guess maybe I'll paraphrase then. Are there any downsides we need to know about? I mean, this is a lot, I mean, this is a huge amount of stuff in this thing. And I read through it last night, and completely it was Greek.
And we do understand there is a lot here, but I think what I would suggest to you is, we've got purchasing things over here and over there, and this is our ability to step back with a new software tool, to step back and say, "How can we be more efficient?" We believe this is what we need to do to clean things up and make it streamlined and make sure that our users understand it. I mean, that's been one of the things that's really been emphasized in the training. This is a way for us to procure things more quickly and have the same sort of accountability that you expect and that I expect as well.
So what should we expect to see in our statements then now? What should we expect to see?
You'd be seeing things that perhaps were not in the budget, things that have come in much higher than the contract you approved because we've got a change order that's substantial, you know, over $25,000 is an increase. You know, those would be the kinds of things that would, you know, the goal would be to reduce the volume because it is repetitive, and you don't see the effort that staff, meaning these ladies, has to work on to get it right, you know, last minute on Thursdays, to try and reduce the scope of that so that it's only the unusual expenditures of the type I mentioned that would come to you. And, Mr. Lance, if I can, I do want to respond a little bit to what the worst could be because in my risk manager, you know, hat kind of thing. If Ms. Pemsle left and somebody who did not have the experience or the integrity that she has came and took this job, there would be a decrease in the checks and balance on their authority from the current system. So, you know, the city managers and city recorders and city attorneys, ongoing contact with the purchasing process is the most, the best check and balance that you've got because concentration of responsibility always has the risk of abuse. And having systems in place that, through the inspection, through how the money works, you know, because this has the approval of purchasing and the contract piece, and then the approval of payment. So it's a lot of trust that is being reflected in these decisions, but it's because there is trust and because the system is intended to take advantage of the streamlining possible with technology and the financial benefits with consolidation. You know, so it's a risk benefit analysis that Mr. Lyons has made, and he's asking you to join him.
And I would add to what Susan said. When those stack of bills show up for me to sign, you know, there are things that have already happened, we may have already received the good. With the new software and the check and balance that money's in the budget, you know, I'm going to be putting a great deal of emphasis to the department head to say, "Before you enter that requisition, I need you to screen it and make sure you're absolutely positive the city needs to do this." Because if we're not sure we need to do it at that point, it never moves forward, the good's not ordered, we're not responsible for making a payment. So the department head's going to have financial information at their fingertips to say, "Yes, this thing needs to move forward." And then, once the purchase order is issued, the good is received, then we enter the receiving report. That receiving report's going to say, "Did we get the item? Did we get as many as we were supposed to? Is it in acceptable condition?" And when it is, then that'll be entered into the system, and then a check will be cut. So I think we've actually got some really good places to make sure that, yes, we should buy it, yes, we received it, and now it's okay to pay.
Can I just ask you, on the trust factor that you're talking about as it relates to this position, Ms. Pemsle, you've got to understand, it's the position, it's not you by any means, but, you know, processes, checks, and balances are in place for a reason across municipalities and organizations everywhere. Does that, I mean, is that related mostly to any kind of bill or situation that's $25,000 or under, where we're kind of just relying on the trust? Or are we talking, if it's in the budget for $3 million and one person, the purchasing director, can hit the button and $3 million goes out? I mean, what are we talking about here? How much are we talking trust?
Well, let me break it down a little bit more than that. Yes, I pay large bills all the time. We get very large contract bills on the tennis center, for example. Work was done quickly, bills are very large. And you've been seeing them here, but at the same time, you've already approved the contract. And I never, we never pay a bill, and this is just, this is the way it has to be. We never pay a bill that exceeds the contract. They have to come to you with an amendment. Mr. Griffith will be, he knows that. If I get a bill, I'm like, "I need something here, you know. Oh, you know, I've got it all worked up, it's going tonight." That doesn't change. The contracts are going to be in the system, and they'll be tied, payments will be tied to the contract, is my understanding, that it's expected to work. In addition to that, the system is going to have the bills scanned in. So right now, a department head just sees numbers. They don't see the bills. They're going to have the ability to go to every account under their budget and look at every invoice that's coded to their department. So I'm expecting, and I think the city manager is expecting them to be responsible and look at their accounts, or have somebody delegated to look at accounts and warn them, "Hey, this number's higher than I thought it was going to be. What happened? You know, what went through there? What did I forget?" The city manager will be approving every bill that's paid over $10,000 unless he delegates some portion of those to one of his assistants. I'll be approving, I'm sorry, $25,000. $10,000.
$10,000.
I'll be approving every bill, right? I'm very excited.
Unless it's Water and Sewer.
Except for Doug Swan, it's Water and Sewer, unless I delegate some portion of those. And even if I do that, I can say, "I'm looking at all of them today." We'll still run bills on cycles. We won't be running bills every day because it's too much effort for accounts payable to get ready for a run, to be running every day. So they'll still be running on certain days, as will Water and Sewer. So actually, in some ways, there's more accountability because right now, Chris Griffith, if he looks at one of his accounts, he doesn't know what, he doesn't know what we paid. He can see dollar amounts, and we paid, you know, XYZ company, but he doesn't know, "Well, was that one of their bills?" He can actually pull it up and look at it. "I didn't mean for that to be paid," or "Where did this come from?" Quickly, as opposed to an auditor coming along later and saying, "Where did this come from?" I don't expect that to happen. But there's more access now for people to see it, which should be a deterrent from someone trying to do it. And the people who can run checks are very small. Ordering goods, there's more people that can do that, but as far as payment of the bills, that's a very, very limited amount of people.
This is, you just mentioned this, which came to my mind, that the auditor, this is going to be kind of the final check of some of this, too. Doesn't this process kind of facilitate the audit at the end of the year?
One good thing about this system is the auditor will have access to all the electronic records.
All the electronic records?
So instead of going to folders and pulling invoices, they can pull up the same thing we can pull up. We've talked recently, we're still setting things up as we go, as we cross these bridges, we're finding new things that need to be changed. Something came up about if we put something in the TCM that Ms. Pemsle mentioned, "What if I put something in and it's wrong? Can I delete it?" No. If we have deleting powers, they'll be very limited as well. If we have deleting powers, they'll be very limited as well, and it won't be the person who put it in, because we don't want somebody putting something in and then, after it's gone through the process, pulling it out and replacing it with something else. So every step we take, internal control is in the forefront of our minds. We've talked about some of the issues with our auditors. They're aware of what's going on, they're already interested in getting a chart of accounts and seeing how it's going to work. While they are not hired to find fraud, it is certainly their responsibility to report it, should they find it. But we still come back to payment is very limited. If a new vendor is added, we can have a report that says a new vendor was added, so if somebody that has access to making payments sets themselves up and pays themselves, you know, I can find out that happened. So there's lots of little ways we can, as we build the system, build reports that we can come back to and find, what do we need to do to make sure this is okay? And it's new for me, too. I'm nervous and excited at the same time. I hope it works well. I think it'll make us more efficient, but we're going to have that learning curve. And as we hit it, I can assure you, we'll reach out to the city manager, we'll reach out to legal. Ms. Pimsel will work closely with our office and ours with hers, and we want it to be efficient for our employees, but at the same time, we want it to be under strict controls. So it's not just the wild, wild west.
Are we, have we made some provisions in here, or are there inherently some provisions that, let's say, she retires, she leaves, whatever, and there is no purchasing director in place for some period of time? Do we have, I mean, there's nothing in here that's going to?
There's nothing explicitly in there. We could add something, but the way I think that would be solved is that the city manager would appoint an acting purchasing director. You know, it might be Aaron, for instance. Certainly.
I don't think she would be.
Or whoever Rob was mad at that day.
Susan?
She'd be gone.
I mean, these guys, I'm sorry to take this out, but you guys have obviously spent a lot of hours, and we're trying to absorb this in a number of minutes, so it's, it seems like it's a pretty detailed, big.
It's all good questions here.
Let me add one other thing. The city manager and I are already currently under a $500,000 bond, and I've spoken with our risk manager today, and we're going to add Ms. Pimsel to that bonding system. And we're also looking at, there's a smaller amount, every employee's under a certain dollar amount of bond. It's just a general umbrella type coverage. There's another group that's under a little bit higher value bond, and we're going to evaluate that and see where we are on that, and I'm using him to help guide us, so we'll add those extra layers of security as well.
With no further discussion, I move for approval.
We want to approve the three items separately.
We have three.
So the first item is the ordinance.
Okay, I move for approval of the ordinance.
Second.
Motion second, Ms. Wright, for call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
We'll now consider for adoption Resolution 15R-28 approving the process of making payments using the new ERP Enterprise Resource Planning Software and replacing Resolutions 11R-15 and 14R-23.
Second.
Motion second.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
And then we'll now consider rescinding employee handbook section 6003 as of July 1st, 2015.
So move.
Second.
Motion second, Ms. Wright, for call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Let me, this is just real world stuff going on today, upgrades with the purchasing and what Ms. Pimsel's trying to do, and great questions, council member, and good discussion, but it's just real world. It's where you hit it, you know, be more efficient with your purchasing and your electronic data and access and that kind of stuff. I've been through it. I hate to give up my role, signing all them forms and papers, but it's real world, and it moves along the process, and your department heads will take on some more additional responsibilities and accountability, and it'll be fine.
Okay, we'll move to payment of statements.
Beer permits.
Beer permits.
We'll move to beer permits.
We have, we do have some tonight. We haven't had any lately. We have a special event permit from the Daryl Whirley Foundation at the Bumpus Harley-Davidson location on July 21st, and that application has met our requirements. We also have a ownership change of a business at 635 Medical Center Parkway. That particular application still lacks the codes inspections, but otherwise it has met our background application. That is a, it says ownership change, I think it's really a manager change. And additionally, there's a new location at 352 West Northfield Boulevard. That's a new restaurant, and that application has met our background requirements. We are still waiting for final completion of their codes inspections. So with your approval, we would like to issue the special event permit and issue the other two permits once they meet their codes inspections.
Anyone like to approve the beer permits?
I move for approval.
Second.
Motion second, Ms. Wright, for call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
You have the statements in front of you that need to be paid? Mr. Smotherman, would you entertain a motion?
I'm going to move, we paid the bills tonight.
I'm going to miss that we're not going to get to do that as much. Motion second, Ms. Wright, for call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
You have two recommended reappointments for Parks and Recreation Commission and the Greenway Projects Committee that we'll consider at our next meeting, and we have revamped the process on reappointing board and commission members where it will go to department heads who manage those boards and commissions, then come to City Hall and then start the process, so that way they're helping keep up with those different boards, so. Other business from staff or the City Council?
Mayor, I have one item tonight. As we've talked tonight extensively about the new ERP system, something's come to our attention that we think will make this work smoother for us, and that is for us to dissolve the Fleet Services Fund and move the work done by them into a department of the general fund. So it'd be the Fleet Services Department, not the Fleet Services Fund. For all intensive purposes, the only thing that anybody would notice is we no longer have to record revenue from general fund. The general fund's already paying all the bills, and then they record it as revenue for the police work, the firework, the street department work, the solid waste work. So we've done that with some other departments in the past, like solid waste, we brought in a few years ago, we brought in senior citizens, and several others. So at this point, we only have the drug fund, risk management, and Water and Sewer that are really outside the general fund, using that department. We think at this point, for all the work we have to do to distribute those expenses and make that internal service fund go away at June 30 as an internal service fund, this makes more sense. Additionally, administration has mentioned they would like for us to move the fueling system, the ordering of fuel, the repair of the fuel station, under the fleet management because it ties so directly to the vehicles. And we have struggled with finding a way to do that because with fleet services, we bill out any overhead at the end of the year that does not make that general fund payment of the bills wash to zero as a surcharge or as a refund, and we give it back to the departments or they write us another check, or we record another journal entry, which is what it mostly is now. With fleet, with fuel, we can't do that because with fuel, we also sell fuel to the library. We also sell fuel to the Mercer Housing Authority. That's been a cooperative agreement we've done with them to help them. I can't come along months later and go, "Oh, that fuel you bought a couple of months ago, well, it looks like now you owe me another $25." That's too difficult. So if we move this into the general fund where the fueling already is, we can put it under Mr. Hyatt's umbrella of responsibilities, and I think it will be much more efficient for our department, and I don't think anybody else will even notice the difference. So my recommendation is for us to transfer the fleet department into the general fund as a department, and this is the first time I can recall I'm asking for a budget amendment for a year that hasn't started yet. So we're trying to get it right for the new software before the new year begins.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Questions are? No, go ahead.
Second.
15044.
Yes.
I'll move for approval. Second.
Motion second, Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Any other business come for the staff or City Council? Have a couple of items to give you updates. Mr. Godwin has actually emailed me during the meeting to let you know that the city attorney posting and recruiting profile card sort were completed today, placing the process on target from our outline. He's going to be sending a report on the competencies coming to us, that everyone did the card sort. I thought that was pretty interesting, those 67 cars. This is, I wanted to put all of them in, okay, hire someone who has all of these items, but I know that he's been working extremely hard on that, so we'll keep everyone updated. You're also going to be receiving a letter that went out from the city to, on discussions that we've had based on police calls to the Regal Inn, and you'll get some information on that, that, a letter that I sent out, and if you have any questions on that, please ask Mr. Lyons. He's been involved in all of that and all the information. And then, last but not least, Chris Schaffner passed away this past week. Chris was a dedicated employee with the city and was our communications director for many, many years, and also had a tenure at the Daily News Journal and served the city well, so we, Chris has a child that is the age of my kids, and so he and his wife, their family will be in our prayers, so please remember their family. And also, Henry Huddleston, a longtime engineer in this community, one of the longest tenured engineers in this community, passed away several weeks ago, and wanted to make sure in many of the roads and many of the subdivisions that are in this city were designed by Mr. Huddleston, and definitely want to keep the Huddleston family in our thoughts and our prayers. All right, any other business?
Mayor, I do want to compliment you on the solid waste summit the other day. I thought it was very educational, very informative, and I hope that we can continue down the road on trying to address our concerns and issues that we have with our landfill system. Last night, I believe it was, I was at a meeting on human trafficking, and it's a serious concern that our community is facing, and certainly we need to make sure that we continue to focus and do all we can to help support the agencies, and I know the state is starting to focus on it, starting to make some funding available, and we need to make sure that we do everything we can. I know our city is rated pretty high in the cities that have experienced cases of human trafficking, and I really hope that we can improve the status or where we're at on the list anyways, that, I know it's a challenging subject and topic, but we certainly need to focus on it, do all we can to help.
Absolutely.
And I want to wish everybody a safe and happy Fourth.
Ms. Wright, and not to forget that our community under Star Celebration on the Fourth that will be taking place. It's always a great event. All right. See you, no other business? We'll stand adjourned.